Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall for this exciting final council meeting of the year. I'm Lisa Bender. I will call to order this regular meeting of the City Council for December 7th and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Goodman.
Present.
Johnson. Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano is absent. Reich is absent. Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins is absent. Schrader.
Here.
Worsami is absent. Cunningham.
Present.
Reich.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are nine members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Before we begin our regular business for today's meeting, we have a couple of special items, the first of which is to welcome our Congresswoman-elect Ilhan Omar up and to thank her for her service coming up. And we're so excited about you and your leadership. And many people know that Ilhan worked here before she became a super-duper star. So if you would like to come up and share anything with the council and the community, we would welcome you.
Councilmembers. Casey. It's the plus, the plus council member. It is really exciting to visit with you all today to end of the year on a beautiful journey we've all been on. As President Bender said, I got my start here really in 2014, coming in with a fresh group of city council members eager to make bold changes. And I got inspired by all of you who were really pushing actively to make all of our communities better and to drive engagement from all of the citizens of Minneapolis to actually understand the work that got done here and what it meant for them to be engaged citizens, to partake in the process of impacting their members in the city council, the state level, and at the federal level. And that made me kind of reexamine all of the people that were representing us and put us on a journey to actually create change throughout our state and our country. And because of that class of freshmen, which you were part of, President Bender and Kano and Andrew Johnson, who was my former boss, it is because of all of you that I got inspired to run for office and that I am able to serve the people of District 60B as their state rep. And come January, we'll serve the people of CD5 as their Congresswoman. So I am honored to thank all of you as neighbors, as friends, as champions of justice and look forward to the great, beautiful partnership that we could have that will be transformative for the people that we collectively serve and this great state and this great country we collectively love. So thank you so much for inviting me on your last meeting. And I look forward to all of you coming out to DC to celebrate the beginning of a historic new congress, a congress that is going to be a reflective and representative of the American people. So January 3rd, you all are invited to come to DC to see us get sworn in and to begin a new journey for our country. So thank you all for being here and thank you, everyone, for showing up.
Thank you, Congresswoman-elect. We're so lucky to be represented by such a bold leader who also just leads with heart and has such love for our community. We're so excited for your partnership. Next, I want to recognize Councilmember Reich. And we want to honor the service of a former council member who's recently passed away, Walt Dietzick, who was an incredible leader on the city council and then an elected leader of the park board, as well as a really important community leader in northeast Minneapolis. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. And just wanted to recognize the passing of a pretty significant person for the city of Minneapolis and definitely almost larger-than-life figure in the northeast and eastside neighborhoods. Former alderman, as they call it back in the day, Walter Dietzick passed away at the age of 85. And it's significant, his service, it stretches over several decades. He was a teacher. He served in the Korean War. He served on this council for 22 years, one of the longest-serving members of this body. He did that ably and he retired to serve even further, three terms as a commissioner on the Board of Recreation, Park and Recreation Board. So just such a significant amount of service. His care for youth was in all of his policies as an alderman and certainly as a park commissioner. Decorated as a serviceman when he served in the police department. He had been shot in a couple instances and served very nobly in that capacity. I could go on, but he was always a person who got to the point. And so with that, I would ask my colleagues to join me in a moment of silence in recognition of his service.
Thank you, councilmember. With that, we will move on to adoption of the agenda for today's business. We have one walk-on item to add to the agenda. You have copies at your desks, and this is a request for authorization to execute a proposed confidentiality agreement tied to a possible property acquisition. And this item will be added under the Order of New Business. Are there any other amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries and the amended agenda is adopted. The first item on our agenda is acceptance of the minutes from our regular meeting on November 16th and the adjourned meetings conducted November 14th and 28th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries and those minutes are accepted. Finally, we have the referrals of petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. Is there a motion to make those referrals?
So moved.
Second.
All in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Those carry and those referrals are made. The next order of business is the reports from our standing committees, and the first report will be from the Committee of the Whole, presented by Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Committee of the Whole brings forward three items today. Item number one is the 2040 Comprehensive Plan with four associated staff directions. As we learned yesterday, District Judge Klein has blocked a final action by the council pending a review of the lawsuit.
That's updated.
This is, I'm sorry, I'm giving you guys a little, yes. So, Madam Chair, we are bringing forward three items today. And item number one is a resolution authorizing the submittal of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan to the Met Council along with four associated staff directions. Item number two is the designation of polling places for 2019 in case there are any special elections next year. Item number three is approving four enterprise operational priorities as part of the Racial Equity Action Plan. I move approval of all items.
Thank you. Council Vice President has moved approval of the Committee of the Whole agenda. Councilmember Palmasano. And actually, why don't we, I imagine there are a couple of things to do related to item one, so maybe we should pull that. And I'll go ahead and take the motion to approve items two and three, see if there's any discussion on those items first. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll on items two and three.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich is absent. Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and those two items are adopted. That brings us back to item one, which is adoption of the Minneapolis 2040 Plan, our comprehensive plan. So I'll see if there's any discussion on this item. I expect a few items. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. As I mentioned during the Committee of the Whole meeting, I do have a staff direction to bring as to something we decided we didn't want to include in the comprehensive plan, but it is about further communications as we move forward. Would you like me to do that staff direction now for approval?
That sounds great. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. That was just passed out in front of you by our city clerk. And it states, it's the one that says, "Committee of the Whole, number one, 2040 Comprehensive Plan Staff Direction." It states, "Directing the Office of City Clerk in conjunction with the Communications and Community Planning and Economic Departments to present a recommended plan for council approval, which would notify all Minneapolis residents of what to expect on zoning, development, and related land use changes resulting from the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Such plan to be broad-based and include but not be limited to postal mail, electronic communications, public meetings, and other forms of outreach in multiple languages." If I may just briefly speak on that, that's, this seems to be the compromise of where we're at in conversation with colleagues today. And it's pretty general, and it says that any sort of communication would come back to us for approval as we work on implementation of the 2040 Plan.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
I just want to thank Councilmember Palmasano for bringing it forward and working on the staff direction in this way. I think it's been very helpful, and I will certainly support this. I think that's information that we want everybody to have, and we're going to make sure that they do.
Thank you. And I'm sorry to do this to CPED staff, but I think a couple of my colleagues are trying to finalize the staff direction, and I wonder if maybe Mr. Mogish, you could go help. Just one of the many ways that our CPED staff are doing incredible work on the comprehensive plan. Councilmember Cunningham.
I actually would like to speak to the underlying motion when we get back to it.
Okay, thank you. So is there any further discussion on Councilmember Palmasano's staff direction related to communication for the comprehensive plan implementation? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, that carries. So I do know that, I just want to note that Councilmembers Reich and Ellison are working on a very small change to some language related to job creation. Staff is talking with them, so this has been, of course, work in progress for many years, and these final details are really important to councilmembers. So if we need to, we can maybe come back to this item, we'll just sort of see how we do here. But Councilmember Cunningham is in queue next.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to first thank the staff for all their hard work, although they're not all present since they're still working. So I just wanted to say thank you to them, as well as thank you to my colleagues. We, as a council, took a really bold step of moving away from the language of reduced racial disparities to eliminated racial disparities, which is a big change. That says that we are drawing a line as a city council, that we are going to do everything that we can to no longer be the city that is known for being prosperous, as well as the worst place to live, one of the worst places to live if you are black or native or et cetera. So I want to say thank you to my colleagues for supporting that change, as well as I want to thank folks for the inclusion of a North Side-specific policy. That, too, is very, very impactful. The inclusion of this North Side policy really changes the tide for our community on the North Side. For a very long time, it has felt like the North Side was not well-represented and reflected in all of the city operations. And by having this baked into the 2040 Plan from the very beginning, it really, that changes, really making sure that the North Side is not only thought of but included and made a priority. So thank you so much to all of my colleagues for supporting that, and thank you again for supporting the bold change from reduced to eliminated.
Thank you. I don't see other councilmembers in queue. Is there anything else on this item? Councilmember Gordon.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk, especially if it means that others can complete their work, but I'm always happy to talk. There's a couple main points I wanted to make about the comprehensive plan, though, and I wanted to acknowledge a couple things as it's moving forward. We certainly heard a lot of concerns, a lot of hopes, a lot of issues. I think it's been a long and difficult, challenging path to get us here. I think in the last few days, certainly the last few weeks, we've made a lot of changes and amendments to the plans. I think it's important to recognize that some people have enormous hopes and dreams about what this plan's going to do for us and what it can do for the city. The goals are so high in this plan. This plan offers us pathways to really address the racial inequities that have been plaguing our city and the historical damage that's been done and kind of uproot the structural racism that's been plaguing us for so long. Also, it's got ideas and a pathway forward for how we can take on the responsibility of addressing climate change and having a healthy environment for people who live here now, but also be addressing the future concerns about what's going to happen with our planet. At the same time, we also heard from a lot of people who have a lot of fears and a lot of worries and a lot of concerns about the potential damage it could do to the things that they treasure most about the city. And I just want to acknowledge that I share those highest hopes and aspirations and think that this gives us some pathways that we really need to pursue and follow up on. But I also share some of those fears and concerns about what's going to happen. We want to make sure that as we move forward and change our city for the better, we're also preserving what's best and treasured most about it. I think the plan offers us guidelines and a pathway to do that. And I'm committing, and I believe that we are all committing, that as we move forward with this plan's implementation, we are going to be watching that carefully. We are going to be looking at and remembering the issues that people brought up along this way about how special their neighborhood is, or their block, or their city, or their park, or their place, and how they want to be able to keep and preserve these wonderful things. And we make sure that we manage these changes and this growth in a way that we preserve what's special and extraordinary about our city that's obviously attracting people to it, and we want to keep attracting people to it and welcoming people to our city and preserve those things as we make those changes so we can also make the city work better for everybody and also work better for the future of our residents and the generations to come and the planet. So we're going to keep our eye on this, and I can tell you right now, I'm passionate about some of those policies and those strategies, and I'm going to be bird-dogging those things, and I'm going to be pushing hard to make sure that they happen. And I'm also going to be watching about how we can manage, how we can regulate, and how we can actually push back on the market as we're welcoming some market things to happen and we're saying this is going to help us. I think we also have to remember that it's our job as a government to represent the concerns of the people, and we push back and manage those things. And I think we've demonstrated in a lot of the amendments that we made that we see that and we hear that and we can do that, and I am confident in the year, two, three, four, five, ahead, that would be years, that we can prove that we can do that and we can make sure that this plan works in that way, and I'm committed to do that. And I just wanted to put that out there on the record, and people can hold me accountable, and hopefully they'll hold the council accountable and our whole city staff. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, as Chair of Committee of the Whole and Race Equity Subcommittee, I just wanted to speak to, a little bit to item number three, as it relates to the comprehensive plan, and just acknowledge that the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan represents a significant shift from our city's previous strategic planning process. The council called for this shift in 2017, the city coordinator and Race Equity Division ordinance, and it's a critical first step in moving forward and so ahead. It's just really exciting, the way we do strategic planning and the part of that change means trying new things, measuring results, learning from them, and being adaptive, as Councilmember Gordon just discussed. And so it's really exciting that Minneapolis is leading in a way that systematically and unapologetically integrates traditional strategic planning with our racial equity plan, and then embedding that into our comprehensive plan. So just want to acknowledge what we've accomplished over the past year. We installed the Race Equity Steering Committee, the Race Equity Community Advisory Committee, or RECA, we have race equity coordinators, and then we elected officials began to select a small set of strategic policy priorities. And at the same time, our department heads and staff developed four strategic racial equity actions. And so now, with the passage of this, we have the first chapter of an enterprise-wide racial equity action plan, focusing how we do our own work. Implementation of this plan will require all of us to try doing things differently, to maintain a laser-like focus, to take smart risk, to make mistakes along the way, but we need to make sure we are holding space for systemic learning and improvement, and we can do that. And we will begin to see real, sustainable changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. So many great comments from my colleagues, just sort of flesh out how much goes into a comprehensive plan. Sometimes the debates can focus very narrowly on certain aspects of it, and that's appropriate when the community raises their concerns, that is what we focus on. But just as has been mentioned by Council Vice President Jenkins and Councilmember Gordon, there's so much that's gone into it to shape it and so much more to come. I mean, we're going to do our transit action plan, our zoning map. Our environmental objectives will be codified in a new document moving forward. And you can all imagine how urgent that work will be. And then there's the implementation, which is an ongoing aspect of, once you plan it out, you must put the dollars where you say your priorities are and start implementing and shape the city in the manner that is consistent with our values and input from the citizenry. I would also just give a shout-out to the people who put a lot of hours in this. Every councilmember put a lot of work into this. When I went around chatting to see what was on their minds and where they're coming from, so thoughtful. You learn so much from your community, from the people who really know it best, and I can guarantee you that many, many aspects of this plan have that insight, that local context, and that voice and leadership from your elected official. Also, of course, we have some very talented people who were part of the steering committee from the very first day. Council President Bender, who was Chair of the Zoning and Planning Committee, was a trained planner, brought not only leadership, determination, but also just great professional insights that I think translated policy objectives into a document rather effectively. So it was a sort of a gift that we had, or sort of a bonus, having her involvement. Also, I would say there was different working groups from staff. Every category had an active working set of staff people putting their professional insights into it. I'll call out the one that I'm most familiar with, Transportation Public Works. And you can see in our comprehensive plan, it's probably one of the best plans coordinated with the built form, with how we move around as a city. Transportation and the built form are really nicely thought through in a comprehensive, unsiloed sort of way. And that was the work of our professional staff from day one, working in their workgroups to really zero in topic by topic, but then making sure it was consistent with the whole. And of course, our long-range planning vision, led by Director Worthington, obviously made sure that the whole document was just that, a comprehensive plan that took in many elements to present something that was consistent throughout the document, and then hopefully something the Met Council will approve. So with that, thank you, Madam President, for indulging my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll only speak once on this, but it might be a little bit longer than some of my colleagues. I see that we're continuing to make improvements to the comprehensive plan, even here at the 11th hour, and that's good. I'm supportive of those. The 14 goals of this 2040 count plan were good. We have the right goals. This is a huge body of work. It was mentioned, it's actually almost as big as the budget book I compared. This plan speaks to oh-so-many things, and we haven't talked about a lot of these things, a lot of other parts of this plan, and there's some good stuff there. Because, to me, the public conversation has been intensely focused on land use and built form mostly, because that's where we see the biggest changes taking place. Yet these goals, including eliminated disparities, equitable civic participation, proactive, accessible, and sustainable government, now we work on those goals a lot. We work on them every day at City Hall together. But I wonder, can you say this count plan is a model of that, really? Unfortunately, I feel the 2040 Plan is aspirational in important ways, and it also falls short. It does very little to create opportunities through some of these maps that might actually help achieve these goals in parts of our city, like mine. The places furthest away from the downtown core makes affordable housing we have harder to keep. That's been my understanding throughout this process. That's not achieving our goals. That's not accessible, affordable housing. I'm all for a charge to be bold when that's warranted. I'm all for innovating and making important changes to make climate change, but this is untested, and the risk we're taking is something that we can't walk back. And I wish we'd have settled on something more incremental. When I first met with Long Range Planning regarding their first draft of this plan, I was really skeptical, but challenged myself to stay open-minded. I was assured that this is a really rough draft, lacking specificity, a launchpad, they said, to welcome new ideas and feedback and ideas from the community. Immediately, I knew that what I would call the striped zoning of corridors and the significant increase to fourplexes was going to be controversial. This was a big departure from keeping development compact at neighborhood nodes. At this point, though, no one would have ever heard about this plan. One of my core values as a policymaker here is transparency, and that's why I asked colleagues on the steering committee to support sending a letter to residents to simply inform them that a public input period was taking place here. "This is a dramatic change," I said. I was, and I am still frustrated, that the engagement around the first draft didn't involve any physical mail. Colleagues felt that wasn't needed. Yet we send it for things like shoveling our sidewalks, we send it for elections, so why would we not make that part of this communication strategy? Without agreement for citywide mail, I sent my own, using my own board office budget, because I felt engagement was lacking. And that one letter led to hundreds and hundreds of responses, the vast majority of which expressed some level of concern, and oftentimes, a lot of input for changing draft two, just like I'd asked them to provide. While many were quite demanding, we stuck up for the process Long Range Planning laid out, encouraging folks to submit their comments and be patient to see them considered in the second draft of this plan. Boy, were we duped. I was assured that council offices would play a role in shaping draft two. That makes sense, right? That prior to this release, I, an elected councilmember tasked to make policies on behalf of the city of Minneapolis, would actually get to weigh in on this plan. Frankly, that singular one-hour meeting was insulting and a blatant disregard for this process, and I believe you know that, I believe Long Range Planning knows that. How is that a transparent process? This feedback wasn't taken seriously. I wasn't consulted in any way that could meaningfully shape this plan between versions one and version two. This department had embargoed conversations with media outlets prior to meeting with councilmembers, and finding that out, I fully understood, this was not a document inviting any of the considerations I'd been collecting all summer long. But enough about broken promises and broken processes for a minute. I take great umbrage with the output of where we got in the second draft. The second draft was all too similar to me to the first. It turns out the intent was to reframe the narrative instead of acknowledging, maybe feedback suggests we've gone a bit too far. The vast majority of those messages came with recommendations for improvement. Whether it be upzoning corridor nodes, and yes, that's real, that's feedback I got, keeping the density in between lower for clustered development, environmental improvements, speculative builder concerns targeting the more affordable homes in our city, there were a lot of concerns and input. None of that made it into the second draft. The first draft, it feels, wasn't a draft. It was an agenda that a city department was trying to push. So when version two snuck out the door before my promised follow-up meetings with Long Range Planning, promised to me by this department's leadership, it didn't reflect the feedback we'd received. It didn't reflect requests to address things like absentee landlords, to lift up affordable homeownership and local wealth building, to concentrate density on areas that make sense instead of haphazardly leaving it up to developers, to truly address the affordable housing crisis and to show with some or any kind of data that this plan would lead to affordability, those issues were left unincorporated. So upon asking, "When do I now get to forward input?", I was told during markup, yet another broken part of this process. Councilmembers like me were chastised for bringing forward several amendments, and staff decided to quit helping our offices write them up. If staff didn't have the capacity to aid council offices, then it should have been made clear earlier, they should have dedicated more time before adoption. And if any of my colleagues are frustrated that some of us came with more than a handful of amendments to discuss, it's because this is when we were told to do so. These little things we were able to do at the end, I appreciate my colleagues for considering them. I do think many of these last amendments made the plan better, and since there's no support for turning back, I hope you've seen me work with you here at the end to improve this document. And given where the public discourse has gone on this, so many changes had to come in one big assembled map packet led by President Bender, and I really value her getting that together, because otherwise, I don't think we'd have gotten this done. Thank you. This process has lacked transparency and accountability from the beginning. Hiring a public relations firm to sell a narrative to the public instead of spending money on actual engagement, not having a rigorous work plan or work product for how comments were analyzed, not being prepared enough to have a communication strategy, one that we could follow through on, for this plan, misleading council members like myself on how and when their input and thus the input of their residents would be incorporated, creating a false narrative that this plan inherently guarantees affordability, which it does not. Simply building more does not lead to affordability, and saying that by pairing it to an inclusionary zoning ordinance that hadn't come through at the time and at this point today is going to be a temporary measure, I feel is irresponsible. But that's not all. I'm appalled and I'm saddened that the narrative of this plan took on a really negative discourse. These goals are correct. We all agreed on that, and most of the feedback, I'd say, strongly agrees with these 14 goals. But through this past year of Act Plan development, constantly putting people down because we disagree on the avenues to take in order to achieve these goals is wrong. And when we do it as council members, when we turn to things like social media and send these insults, that's an abuse of this office. Reverting to divisive rhetoric is getting us nowhere, you see. People in our city have expressed a genuine concern for our entire city about the effects of these proposed changes. Neighborhoods should not be turned into commodities for temporary exploitation, no matter where you live. After all this, how can we look residents in the face and ask for their feedback on anything after this? I think we've done them all a disservice. So yeah, we had the right goals, but we have the wrong Act Plan.
Okay. Councilmember Ellison is next in queue to speak.
I want to thank my colleagues, and speaking of last-minute changes to the Act Plan, I have, I wanted to make a motion, and I know it's zero hour, and it's kind of slightly technical, but this originally was going, I was going to make a motion to, you know, make a land use, I think, change to my area, but I was, I think, wisely persuaded not to do that from staff, not to be so overly prescriptive in how I was trying to reach this particular goal. And so I'll read the motion, but just to give a little bit of editorializing, it focuses on job creation and job-creating uses. And I think that in North Minneapolis especially, I find myself and my residents really, really wanting to see other job-creating uses aside from minimum-wage work, low-wage work, that doesn't quite sustain folks long-term. And so I'll go ahead and read the amendment, and also thank Councilmember Reich for helping me through this process. So I want to make a motion amending the 2040 Comprehensive Plan for both Policy Three, Action Step J, as well as Policy Four, Action Step I, to ensure employment opportunities are provided in areas well-served by transit and mixed-use development, allowing production and processing uses in commercial mixed-use areas while controlling for potential negative externalities through building and site design. This includes potentially designating certain identified areas to emphasize employment goals. And the reason I took this approach was because I realized that, as I was trying to fix the problems along some of my corridors in North Minneapolis, Councilmember Reich was having some similar issues that he was trying to fix along the corridors in his ward. So thank you, guys, and I made my motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Ellison and Reich have moved an amendment. Is there any discussion on that? Do councilmembers have it? Everyone had a chance to see it? Great, perfect. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. My colleague, Councilmember Ellison, said it well. One of the things that was also in the plan was a strong determination from my colleagues, and it's certainly reflected in the document, that as we put a lot of attention to the built form and even a lot of attention towards transportation goals, that we don't lose sight that the city, if it's a strong city, needs to be a working city. Proximity to jobs, good, well-paying jobs, is proximity to opportunity. It's proximity to empowerment. And there's really no empowerment like economic empowerment. And so that's reflected broadly in the plan, but I can tell from my colleagues with steps moving forward, we're going to have, speaking of that laser focus, a laser focus on making sure that we expand and actually implement the idea that this is a working city. And the studies that staff had generated in terms of what it means to be able to produce, to make to communities of color is statistically significant. They make statistically significant more money than in any other sector. That's important. However, over the decades, that's been the greatest area of loss or shrinkage. We had over 20% of our land use back, you know, several decades ago was in the 20% plus. Now it's down to around 3%, with some of it fallow because of it being a brownfield. We need to not only preserve what we have, we need to expand it. And I think this document gives a good framing, but the following steps actually will deliver on that promise. And I'm really excited that I've had colleagues and a mayor who are very, very much pro-jobs and get that sort of sense of urgency around creating employment opportunity for our communities.
Thank you, Councilmember Reich. Any other discussion? You know, I just want to note that I think, I'll just take the opportunity to note this as an example of how any comprehensive plan, like the one we have in place today, is a living document that evolves over time. These plans are amended. We have amended our existing comprehensive plans since I took office five years ago, and it's implemented through zoning and other tools that are changing as our city changes and as we incrementally implement a plan that's intended to shape the city for decades. So I think this is a welcome change now, and also an example of how a council member was able to work together with staff and someone with expertise like Councilmember Reich has in leading, in protecting land for jobs in a really collaborative way that maybe didn't reflect the council member's initial idea of, let's make these specific changes, but was able to work together collaboratively with staff and colleagues to achieve the result that he was after in the end. So I'm appreciative of this particular amendment, but it is just one example of the many ways that council members have shaped this plan and will continue to shape its implementation in the years and decades to come. Is there anything else on this? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed that carries, that is amendment has been adopted. Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to weigh in in this Act Plan conversation, because it's been the first time I've tackled the Act Plan through the City of Minneapolis as an elected official. And at the beginning of the process, it felt really daunting, and I wasn't sure quite what the role was going to be for low-income communities, people of color, diverse residents in that discussion, especially as we acknowledge that the pressures on these communities are so much more visible and significant in terms of deciphering who's going to get to live in this city in the future. And so I appreciate all of the hands-on approach that council members brought to this process. I've heard that the process before didn't receive as much attention or notoriety as this one, and I think that having people really take a stab at grappling with the language and the maps and the intended outcomes is really important, because it shows we're all engaged and trying to make interventions that support our residents and the people who make up the city. I do want to make a note and say that you all know that I still have questions about what the overall implications of a move towards density actually means for the long-term safety and stability of communities of color, low-income residents, who are continually pushed out of our city through increasing rents and this higher demand to live in this beautiful city that so many folks have decided to make home and have decided not to abandon. And so while I have those questions, I am supportive of the plan and supportive of the process that we took together. There's always room for improvement, of course, and I think Councilmember Pomassano's staff direction on future communications and including a multilingual component to that is important. I do want to share that, even though I have those questions around the actual benefits for folks long-term, especially the vulnerable populations, I had a really good email come in from one of my residents talking about how we continue to really guide those values through multiple strategies. So the Act Plan is one touchpoint in that larger conversation, and she talks about, for example, following the budget analysis, and talking about how other mechanisms of implementation kick in over term, over, you know, long periods of time to make sure that what the Act Plan has outlined is actually put into action in our communities in a way that really uplifts the values that we're trying to represent as a city council and as residents of Minneapolis. Things like avoiding gentrification and displacement, and those two things are different. They're connected, but they're different. And so I do appreciate this message that I got from one of my residents named Tara, who talked about the whole systems-wide approach at how we support our communities through the long-term, not only through this touchpoint called the Act Plan, which to me was a very high-stakes game, and I got concerned when I didn't see that many people of color come to testify regarding the Act Plan, and when we didn't have specific, you know, watchdog groups analyzing the Act Plan and making interventions on behalf of those communities, which we typically have had and leaned on in the past with things like workers' rights and immigration reform and so forth. So I'm putting in my chip, saying I'm cautiously hopeful that this will be something positive for communities, and that I look forward to working with all of you on important initiatives such as, one of my favorites, which is the cultural districts. And I do want to say that it's been a privilege and a pleasure to be able to work in partnership with the mayor's office on making that designation come forward. The Mayor Frye and his office, specifically through the work of Sean Pierce, have really bulldogged this effort all the way through and provided much-needed expertise and knowledge to really advance that discussion. And I was really thankful to be able to work in partnership, not only with the mayor's office on that, but also with our council colleagues, Council Vice President Andrea Jenkins, Councilmember Ellison, and there are certainly many others here at this dais who are interested in this discussion, Councilmember Philippe Cunningham, Councilmember Reich. And I look forward to building a workgroup that can involve all of our best thinking and all of our energy and our passion to ensure our city remains and continues to be a unique, dynamic, multicultural community where people feel welcomed and included. Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make a few comments about the process, I think, in light of some of the other comments that were made about this. I was actually one of the few council members who was here the last time we updated the Comprehensive Plan, so I remember what that process was like, and this one was quite a bit different. One of the things that was different about this was the high level of engagement and the high level of engagement early. The fact that we had staff going out, collecting people's ideas and inputs at festivals and events and at focus groups, you know, over a year before we were going to even be drafting the plan, was very significant. I think they were actually also trying to respond to direction and interest of the council. One of the commitments we've made as a city council is to try to gather input from different voices and reach out to demographic groups that aren't typically giving us feedback and information, and reach out early and reach out in new and different ways so that we can gather that input. I think if we're committed to racial equity, that's also got to mean doing more to engage those who are typically left out, and I think that's what our staff did try to do, and bring in those resources. And I think that it was helpful. It was helpful to get that feedback, but it was also helpful to get people excited about thinking about what kind of city that they wanted in the future and what things mattered to them about the future of the city where they live, and actually get more interested in city government and what's going on. And I think that's another thing that this plan did. It actually helped us have a larger community discussion about some of the biggest issues facing us, including how we manage our growth and how we address things like climate change and racial inequities. I also found, over and over again, I was appreciating the work that staff was making towards assisting me in understanding it and my constituents. I had more than one meeting in the ward, and I think at one of those meetings, there were three staff there that did a ward two presentation. I was actually able to work with some of my colleagues, and we had joint meetings about the Act Plan with neighborhood areas that we shared, and that was significant. I definitely had two neighborhood organizations that were very engaged and deeply engaged in giving me feedback on the Act Plan and submitting information to the Act Plan. And then after they saw the second draft, they acknowledged some things were there, and then they had more ideas of bringing more things forward, and I was able to work with them to do it. I thought about doing a mailing, and I certainly wouldn't have objected to utility insert, although I confess, I didn't think of it early on when we planned what we're putting in our utility inserts, to make sure that it got in there one of those months. For those who don't know, that's an insert we put in with the water bill that everybody, property owners, all get. Not all residents get it, I'll mention that. But I also am pretty certain that I had staff who reviewed every one of my 27 amendments and helped me draft the language appropriately for the policy amendments that I made. I even remember getting some feedback about how maybe we could tweak it a little bit so it was more in the voice, consistent with the rest of the document. And I know I got some ribbing from my colleagues about 27 amendments. It does sound like a lot, but I will point out that I wasn't the council member who brought in the most amendments, just to give a little, but nevertheless. I had, I feel like I had help with all of those amendments. I also recognize there was a point at which, appropriately, the Act Plan was handed off to the council and the council offices, and we were dealing with it. And actually, I also turned to the clerk's office to help me with my amendments and make sure they got in the right place, they were worded the right way, and I really appreciated the help and assistance from the clerk's office as well as the planning department as we went through this and brought these forward. I think, I'll also note that we had two really long public hearings on the Act Plan, and really long is all relative, I think, but they were probably five or six hours, one at the Planning Commission and one at the council. I don't remember anything like that about the last Act Plan. I think we had rather short public hearings, and so we had lots of engagement. And so I think that was significant, and I really appreciate all the work that went into this, from my neighborhood organizations who were involved, from all the residents who got involved, from my colleagues who worked on this, but also from staff in the CPED Department and the clerk's office. And I have to also acknowledge that before any of the plan was written, we also had topic carries and focus groups, so we actually had staff leadership from the Health Department, from Public Works Department, from probably all the departments out there, police, fire, and you name it, were engaged and involved in those focus groups, helping deal with the topics and work on the goals, and I appreciate everybody's effort in that.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank our staff for their work on this. This has been, literally since I was sworn in five years ago, they have been working on this and talking about this and planning this and preparing for this. There's been hundreds of community meetings on this, tons of outreach, engagement, and support for council members as well. And it's really a monumental effort, and I think it's encapsulated with Director Worthington sending me an email on Thanksgiving related to this, and I don't think you've gotten any breaks probably throughout this process, and I just want to... and I just want to recognize that and say it is noticed and it is appreciated, all the work on this. And I want to thank as well all of the engagement from my constituents and from people across the city on this. I received hundreds of emails and also phone calls, and we had lots of people show up at our neighborhood meetings on this. We held, no, I held a couple of joint meetings on this with Councilmember Gordon, and we had more meetings on this than any other topic during my five years in office out in the ward, and received a lot of feedback from constituents. And of course, there's some people that felt that this didn't go nearly far enough, and were very passionate about seeing it be a larger change, and there were also folks that are very concerned about this comprehensive plan. And in the case where folks have been concerned, I think one of the remarkable things is really talking through where that's coming from, what the specific root causes are, and trying to see how we can address that throughout this process. And I found a lot of cases that was possible, and it actually influenced a lot of the amendments that I know I brought forward and I know colleagues brought forward as well. But I also think what was important was going out, when we represent over 30,000 residents, and talking with people at their doors and at community events and asking them what they think about this as well. And I was really impressed with how many people knew about this, knew the details of this, and overall felt that it was a positive step, but also were able to voice where they have concerns, where they have some skepticism, and also what they're hopeful about. And I think that that's really reflective personally about how I feel about this, because I think inevitably with something so comprehensive as this, there's aspects that we're not going to be perfectly happy about every single piece of this. It's been an imperfect process. It has components that I have some skepticism about or minor concerns about as well. But overall, I think it's a really well-written document. I think it moves our city in a positive direction, and I appreciate my colleagues for their willingness to compromise on this as well and try to balance all of these different concerns that have come forward from a diverse set of perspectives across our city. I think the common root thread of that really is that people love our city and people love their community, and they want to see any change be positive outcomes for it. And I think that's something we all share and we're all coming from on this, and something I appreciate about the conversation. And finally, I think it's important that we carefully monitor this, and as we implement the finite details as well of this comprehensive plan, and make sure we continue to represent those voices in our community, engage our community members, and make sure we're open to making adjustments along the way as necessary. So thank you to everybody involved with this process. I just really appreciate the level of thought and care that's gone into this.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I've been through the comprehensive plan revision process more than once, and I've also been through a full rezoning of the city of Minneapolis. And what I would say is, if we continue to do things the way we've always done them, we're not going to have a different result. We are facing a situation in our environment, our city and our nation, where we have extremely low unemployment, affordable housing crisis almost in every major city, a lack of labor to work in the jobs we have, and rising housing costs as a result of the success that urban areas have seen throughout our country. So it's under that premise that I have a few thoughts about some of the specifics with regard to the plan. First of all, the plan is not only about land use and built form maps. The plan aggressively challenges issues like racial equity, sustainability, climate change, environmental management. I am protecting our lakes and our beautiful Mississippi River. But much of the attention has focused unfortunately on the massive rezoning that is suggested within this plan and the built form that is going to happen as a result of it. So I want to offer a few thoughts. This plan is not going to on its own increase affordable housing at all. In wards like the one I represent, no one is going to buy an expensive house, tear it down, build a triplex, turn it into condominiums, and offer one of them as affordable. Now that might happen in wards that other people represent, and that's what those council members have been tasked by their constituents to do, not me. But in my ward, unfortunately, I don't think this plan will bring about the affordable housing that I have advocated for, for my entire career, in areas of affluence and areas that are not filled with concentrations of poverty. But in addition to that, we're not going to see tons of housing built without parking. And I really take issue with the idea that anyone thinks that all sorts of housing is going to be built in a ward like mine without any parking. No one's going to buy an expensive house or take a market-rate apartment if they have a car if there is no parking. So we're not going to see a situation where tons of housing is built, no parking is built, every street is crowded, and everyone feels that they're entitled to a spot on the street. I'll also say that we're not going to see crazy unrestricted development outside of what the current setbacks and height restrictions are in interior one, two, or three areas. It's very clear in the plan, and it's been made clear even in the staff direction, that interior neighborhoods will fit the current building envelope. So if there are new construction to be had, and I hope there is, I don't see the difference between having one house six feet from the lot line, 35 feet tall, with one family in it, or three. The bottom line is, the height's going to be the same, the setbacks are going to be the same, and so we're just going to potentially have more people living in those houses. But again, we have to figure out where more people are going to live in our city, and so this is one very teeny-tiny step. I do worry that allowing for a major upzoning will have unintended consequences, especially in the areas of gentrification and displacement. Without question, developers are going to buy inexpensive properties, tear them down, build more densely, and likely raise rents as a result of having to buy a house, tear it down, pay for the land, and that is what markets do. That is what the private market does, and I do have concerns about that, and I think we have to be very conscious in monitoring that to make sure we don't see increased displacement as well as gentrification. In the ward that I represent, there were two very active small-area plans, one in the Loring Park neighborhood, one in the Bryn Mawr neighborhood. Both of the small-area plans were incorporated into this plan. The one in Loring Park, 100% was incorporated into the small-area plan, even in places where staff had concerns about it. They respected the fact that small-area plan process happened two years ago, went through a massive rezoning, and did not make changes. I can't speak to what happened in other parts of town, but I can speak to the two that were in my experience. And then lastly, I'll say there's a lot of talk about people who live around the lakes, and I will say that many of the neighborhoods that I represent surrounding the lakes already allow triplexes. Much of Lowry Hill, East Isles, parts of Sidna, parts of Kenwood already have B2 zoning or higher, meaning they can have two units plus an ADU. I can count, two plus one is three. Triplexes are not a lot different than two homes plus an ADU. So the world is not coming to an end in this regard either. It's different in areas where there are single-family homes, one family living in it, and instead of two, it could be three, but that's nothing compared to the increased density we're going to see on corridors, because this is all driven by money, and developers want to build more densely. They don't want to be buying houses, tearing them down, and building three units. That's just not in their economic interest. Are there issues with the plan? Most of my issues have to do with process. I don't disagree with Councilmember Palmasano's point of view with regard to a number of the issues. I might state them slightly differently. This is a process that should have brought us together, not divided us. And what I see in my ward and from people who I respect and love is there's a lot of division, and there's a lot of anger, and I think a lot of that anger is directed at us and our staff, and in these cases rightfully so. We should have been able to do more to try to quell fears, and we should have done more in order to take into consideration what individuals had to say between the first plan and the second draft. It wasn't until council members got involved with the leadership working on the plan that significant changes were made. And I would just wish that would have happened sooner because that laid out an idea that our staff wasn't listening to the public, and I think, to some extent, the staff were doing what they were told, which was do something as big and bold as you possibly can, even though folks didn't understand what "big and bold as possibly can" meant. There should have been way more notice about a massive upzoning like this. The reason you didn't see as much controversy in the plans that have gone forward before is because they don't do as much as this plan is doing, and so I don't think folks knew that there was going to be this massive change in zoning, and change for most people is extremely hard. I appreciate Councilmember Palmasano's effort to try to make sure that people get notice about the zoning changes going forward. I think that's a critical piece to bring back trust in the communities where my constituents are very concerned about these changes. I don't think we should have hired a PR firm, spent $80,000 to tell people that what they're thinking is wrong. I think it's very unfortunate that that happened, and hopefully we can do better in the future at reaching out, because now we have a long list of people who have given comments, and we have their addresses, and we can reach out to them and talk to them about what the next steps will be in the rezoning process. Ultimately, and I say this in my personal relationships, and I'll share this here today, understanding how people feel about what's going on and respecting it needs to happen with everybody, myself included. We can't challenge other people on how they feel about something. We can challenge them on the facts, and we can challenge them on, you know, disagreeing with potential unintended consequences, but if people feel scared, we have to take them at the place where they feel scared. If they feel hopeful, we should take them at the place where people feel hopeful. But ultimately, this has to be something that brings us together. I want to commend Councilmember Bender for working with me in order to make changes in my ward. As a result of those changes, I am going to vote for the plan today, as I committed to do, because I think that there is more good than bad, and I think we can work forward together on the things that are not positive as the rezoning goes forward to make sure that we don't have the kind of process that we've had up until this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, the two rules in politics are generally, number one, don't go back on your word, and number two, don't speak after Councilmember Goodman when she's on a roll, and in this case, I'm violating rule number two. But I do agree with her sentiments. First, I want to acknowledge that there are numerous really significant items on this agenda. I mean, everything from, we passed a budget a day ago, to municipal ID, to a racial equity action plan, which didn't even get any discussion until it had already passed, thank you, Council Vice President, to the appointment of a chief to Roof Depot, and a number of these items are controversial in and of themselves, and the comprehensive plan, I think, follows right in those footsteps. You know, I remember meeting over a year ago with Council President and Councilmember Reich to discuss the plan moving forward, with the comprehensive plan, and I want to thank you, by the way, for your work on this. It's been a whole lot of effort moving this forward, and, you know, we wanted to make sure that a comprehensive plan didn't become an apprehensive one, and we did want to ensure that feedback was sought throughout the city. And I do acknowledge that the process was messy along the way, and certainly improvements could be made, but the work that went into this plan was a lot. You know, CPED staff, I know, have been working really long hours on this, and thank you. And to the general public in this city, I want to tell you that your council member, your respective council members had your back. They really did. There were over 100 amendments that were brought forward on this plan. I mean, I can think of amendments from those sitting next to me right now, from Councilmember Palmasano, Councilmember Andrew Johnson, Councilmember Lisa Goodman, Councilmember Ellison. I literally could go down the entire dais here with amendments that were made while thinking about those that were in their particular ward and in having their back. And I can tell you that your council members most definitely did. And the segments that Councilmember Goodman mentioned about a dramatic workforce shortage, low unemployment, as well as a significant housing shortage, were at the forefront of thought when we created a plan that pushed for a diversity of housing options in every single neighborhood. You know, we do want to be able to walk down the street and have a thousand different tastes and smells and sounds and different kinds of people all in the same block, and that was the underlying impetus, but it's not just about housing. This plan touches on everything from transportation to infrastructure to even how our sewer system potentially functions. It's a big plan, and big plans require big feedback, and we got it. We got it. And I want to say whether that feedback was exceedingly positive or feedback that said this plan is awful, we appreciate it. We sincerely appreciate it, and that feedback was incorporated, whether in the form of a couple of different drafts or in the form of 100-plus amendments that came forward. So, you know, my purpose in being here today was mostly in just saying thank you. Thank you to all of the work, all of those on the council, all those in city staff, and all of those in the community that really put forward a whole lot of time and effort to shape what will be a comprehensive plan for the next 20 years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion?
I will then go ahead and just add a few comments here at the end. I know how many hours I have spent working with colleagues on amendments and map changes, and I know that that is many multiples for staff. So first, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for working weekends and holidays and evenings and just going so above and beyond to support policymakers as we make these critical decisions that are really policymaker decisions. And you provided the support and guidance that we need to make those final decisions and will continue to do, as I've said before, in the years and decades to come. Minneapolis has always been a city with a diversity of choices. Our city grew along streetcar lines, and the historic fabric of our city was one with single-family homes next to apartment buildings with small shops and people's, you know, in the basement of people's homes, and the rich history of how the diversity of our city showed up in the physical environment. And then over time, the city slowly made those choices illegal, and it was done in a way that was particular to racial exclusion in housing. And so when you hear the differences of opinion of folks across the city, some of it is based on a really different experience of living in our city. We have places of great wealth and privilege in Minneapolis, and we have places of deep poverty, and those are often found along lines of race, the consequence of decisions that were made over decades to exclude people from neighborhoods in the city of Minneapolis. And I'm really proud of the work and grateful for the work that our staff did along with partners at Augsburg College and the University of Minnesota to acknowledge that head-on and to use the comprehensive plan as one of many, many tools that our city needs to tackle the worst racial disparities in the country. And to really use every tool we have, as Council Vice President Jenkins said so eloquently, one of the many ways that this plan will be implemented as part of a greater body of work is through the Race Equity Action Plan. So centering race equity in this one tool that we have as our city grows and changes is part of a much bigger body of work to integrate and a true focus on race equity in everything that the city of Minneapolis does. I think that this plan does two things. First, it sets a bold vision for our city to tackle racial exclusion in housing and climate change head-on, but it does it in a way that is incremental, and that is gentle. And I think that you can see this in one way, in the way that we've approached housing. In the city of Minneapolis, four years ago or so, we legalized accessory dwelling units in the city. That means that in every owner-occupied home, a person in Minneapolis can add a second unit. That benefit didn't extend to houses where renters live, like 80% of my constituents and more than half of our city as a whole. And in those four years, we've had about 100 new units built. It's not a dramatic change, but it is one way to restore housing options to every neighborhood in our city and to create that diversity of housing options that our city has historically had before apartment buildings were banned from neighborhoods in our city. Through our inclusionary zoning ordinance, we have addressed the issue of the fact that, you know, when we get new buildings in neighborhoods, the rents are often high. And again, one tool that will help us get hundreds of affordable units as our city grows... And again, one tool that will help us get hundreds of affordable units as our city grows. Had we had this ordinance in place during the past few years, we would have had as many affordable units built through this tool as we do through our Affordable Housing Trust Fund every year. Again, hundreds of units built along the Greenway, or in downtown, or along the light rail lines. So, starting in January, every market rate building that increases by 60% of the size of the building will be required to put affordable units in. Throughout the year, we will develop a financial tool. There was pretty significant pushback from developers on this policy. So, starting next year, there will also be financial tools available in exchange for deeper affordability in those apartment buildings. And as we do with all policy change, we will monitor and adjust all of these changes as we go forward. And perhaps the most significant and exciting thing coming next year is the development of our Transportation Action Plan. It'll be a huge priority for me to work together with Councilmember Reich, continuing our partnership on these details of transportation and land use, to make sure that when we focus growth along transit in our city, as this plan does, as it continues, the policy that the city has had for the past several decades of concentrating growth in those communities that have the best transportation access and service, that we have a true transit system in our city. And that relies on the partnership of Hennepin County, of the Metropolitan Council. We need funding, sustainable funding for transit from the state legislature. We may even want to bring our own funding to the table and make sure that operations are working really well in those neighborhoods where so many people are dependent on transit, and where we hope that by providing true reliable transit service and transportation options, people will use that choice. And we'll be able to use that as one tool to fight against our city's contribution to climate change in reaching the goal of our very aggressive goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 80%, which will only be achieved through building, changes to our buildings, the building energy use, and transportation changes in our city. Again, the Comprehensive Plan is just one tool to reach these goals of eliminating racial disparity, and local fight, contributing to our local fighting against climate change. And it's something that will be implemented through many, many things in the coming years. In particular, I think the changes that council members have led related to race equity have really taken those goals and made them real and concrete. So, Councilmember Kano's work to bring forward more detail to green zones, and to work together with council members Cunningham and Ellison and Jenkins on cultural districts. I mean, those, that's an idea that will only take shape with the leadership of council members, and that's why it's so exciting to have such a talented city council full of bold leaders who will be working hard to implement this plan. This plan has ideas like innovation districts, where we could use green energy to do things that cities have never done before. And I'm really excited about all the creative ideas that are coming forward. So, in closing, I just want to thank all of my colleagues for all of the detailed work and the thought that went into this. In many ways, we're just getting started, after years of work now in implementing the plan. I just want to note a couple of things, too, in closing. You know, this plan really came through very incrementally through two different city councils. So, at the beginning of the process, last term, we unanimously adopted a community engagement plan, which was intentional in reaching communities of color and cultural communities who often don't get involved in planning efforts like this. This is the most ambitious community engagement plan, or methods of any policy development like this that our city has had, and significantly more than any other Comprehensive Plan has ever had. And I'm really grateful for the ways that staff went above and beyond in coordination with our Neighborhood and Community Relations Department to make sure that we are reaching communities that are not often involved in conversations like this. We adopted 14 goals last term, and then the new council came in and took that vision and really helped shape it into these details. And I'm excited to see where we are going next. So with that, I'll see if there's any other comments or discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
No.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes and one nay.
That carries, and that item has been adopted. As we move forward with our agenda, I want to suggest one change that may be, I hope my colleagues will be amenable to. I think we have a number of folks here who are waiting to hear us discuss and vote on the municipal ID, which is item four from the Peace Committee's agenda. So, I'll suggest that we take up that one item from the Peace Committee, and see if there's any objection to that idea. Okay, seeing none, then maybe I'll recognize Councilmember Kano, if that's okay, to start us off, and maybe moving this item forward from, so this is the P E C E Agenda Item Number Four, the Municipal Identification Program Ordinance.
Thank you so much, Council President. I appreciate your sensitivity to the many folks who took off of work and came here this morning to join us for this conversation. So, I am bringing forward, with the support of our committee and our committee chair, Councilmember Philippe Cunningham, the ordinance for establishing a municipal ID program, and wanted to talk about the framework for that approach. It's an issue that has been discussed in City Hall for probably 10 years. It began many years ago when Councilmember Glidden was around at the time, and has continued to evolve and grow. And it's to a point now where this municipal identification program is an effort for Minneapolis, by Minneapolis, to share in on the benefits of this beautiful city and remove barriers to a basic necessity which is becoming a privilege, such as having a driver's license, or a form of identification that can, that is needed to be used, that is needed to access things such as your ability to interact with our police department, your ability to talk to a landlord and rent an apartment, and a host of other needs that our communities have when they require a form of identification. So this work is in line with our work to address institutional racism, and to create more opportunities for our residents, and to ensure that there's a level playing field so that we can all be more connected, united, in a time where a lot of division seems to be shaping national conversations about the future of our country, our state, and sometimes our city. So, I happily bring this forward. I'm happy to take questions. Welcome other council members who've been involved to weigh in. And do want to recognize the many residents in the room today, and the groups, and the community leaders, and business partners, and city staff who have gotten us to this point. This is a, the beginning of establishing the foundation for the framework of the program. And all of those partnerships and the hard work have led us to where we are today. And I do want to take a small moment to acknowledge Jamie Makepeace and the mayor's office for also helping to drive this particular piece of work forward. It is, it is a very positive and privileged thing to be able to work in such unison with our arms of government here together at the city, to be able to deliver results for our community in an efficient and effective way. So with that, I'll take any questions or comments or discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Kano has moved item four from the Peace Committee Agenda. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Councilmember Kano for her leadership with this work. It was no, this has been no easy lift, and her leadership, I'm proud to be able to be in support of her. And one of the wonderful things about the municipal ID that I truly so appreciate is the fact that there has been such a, an intersectional coalition of folks who have been built across different communities to come together on a similar struggle. Earlier today, I spoke on how this will positively impact the trans community. As a transgender person myself, I can speak personally to how challenging it can be and expensive it can be to change one's name legally, as well as the hoops that folks have to jump through in order to change their gender marker on their ID. Very expensive, very inaccessible, and those two issues are actually going to be addressed in this municipal ID program, and that's huge for the trans community. And so as a trans person, I'm really excited to be able to stand in solidarity with my immigrant refugee neighbors that have been very active in the municipal ID work. And I really look forward to every single resident in the city coming forward and getting a municipal ID, as we have great pride in our city and stand also in solidarity with all of our neighbors. So, thank you again, Councilmember Kano, for your leadership, and I feel very grateful to be able to support this work moving forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that is adopted. Thank you.
Wow. How great.
And everyone is welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if folks also want to get up and make their way out, that's just fine with us as well. Thank you again so much for those who came. Okay, so now, we'll return back to the regular order of our meeting agenda, which means the next report is for the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, given by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing 12 items forward for approval this morning. Item number one is a new business license, and item two is denying an application for a license. We're actually asking that that item be withdrawn. Item three is a new business license. Item four, our business license operating conditions. Item five are some changes in the issuance of business licenses. And item six and seven, I'm going to pull for comment, if that's okay. Item eight are the liquor license approvals. Nine are the business license renewals. 10 are the gambling license renewals. 11 are the business license operating conditions for a property in the 10th Ward. And 12 is license settlement recommendations for property in the 3rd Ward. Item 13 is a data sharing agreement with Minneapolis Public Schools for our Step Up Program. So, I will move all items 1 through 13, but ask that Councilmember Ellison be recognized on the very large items on our agenda with items six and seven.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Goodman has moved items 1 through 5, and then 8 through 13 on the EDRS Agenda. Is there any discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk?
I'm getting them to do.
Oh, you're going to pull them?
Yeah, okay.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you.
Councilmember, we're voting on all items.
Oh, aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Those items carry, and that brings us back to items six and seven. Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to speak to these two items. They're both in Ward Five, but they're also just going to be major amenities for the North Side as a whole, and for the city as a whole. The first one is item six. It's, it has to do with the Capri Theater expansion. I really want to be able to congratulate Ann Long, who's the executive director there, and the decades of work that it's taken to get us to this point, or for Capri to get to this point. Growing up in North Minneapolis, I could say that I don't know of a spoken-word artist, or a writer, or a performer who hasn't gone through the Capri at some point. I've been to film fest, North Side Film Festivals at the Capri Theater. It's definitely a major amenity and a gem over on the North Side. And I know that this has been a long, a long time in the making, and so I want to, you know, congratulate them, but also thank staff, thanks CPED staff for getting us to that point. And then, secondly, on item seven, has to do with the land sale of 927 West Broadway, which is a partnership between the Phillips Family Foundation, Tri Construction, and New Rules. And Phillips, and Tri Construction and New Rules are both North Side businesses. They're not only operating in the North Side, but they're black-owned businesses, and both of the owners of those businesses live in Ward Five. And so, in that regard, you know, we talk a lot about community ownership, about people in the community being able to own not only their homes, but also, and not only their businesses, but also some land as well. And I think that in this partnership with Phillips Family Foundation, there is, there's a strategy for Tri Construction and New Rules to eventually own this property outright. Phillips Family Foundation, it's going to take millions of dollars to renovate this building, and to get this building up to where it needs to be, and operational. And Phillips Family Foundation is kind of leveraging their financial strength in order to make this project happen with a seven-year plan to get the property into ownership of the co-ownership of Tri and New Rules, which I think really, I'm interested in that model. And I think it's something that maybe the city should also be looking to, so that we can learn from in the future. And then also, Phillips Family Foundation is not only putting some money behind this project, but they're moving their full headquarters to North Minneapolis in this building. I think that that's huge, and I think that this is going to be a big project. And I want to thank specifically Jim Terrell, I don't see him in the room, but I want to thank Jim Terrell from CPED for really his leadership and making this project happen, and his belief in this project and in these North Side businesses. So, thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I also wanted to speak to these two items. As the other North Side council member, I cannot say how excited that I am for these two projects to come to North Minneapolis. It's, it's big for us to have gathering places as a community, for us to be able to have nice amenities as a community, and to be able to have these two big projects coming through. I just can't even say enough how excited I am. I also wanted to actually take a moment to thank Jim Terrell. We are very, very lucky to have such a hard-working, committed city staff member who sees North Minneapolis, sees the potential, sees our people as assets and valuable, and wants to make sure that the city is connected to the residents, the entrepreneurs, and really lifting them up. And so I just want to make sure that I make an extra point about how wonderful Mr. Terrell has been to work with, and the clear level of dedication that he has to the economic success of North Minneapolis and North Side entrepreneurs. These, again, you know, to have Northsiders actually owning and operating businesses, especially along Broadway, is huge, and really, really exciting. And I hope that this is just the first of many opportunities that will be coming, not only to Broadway, but to all of North Minneapolis. And so, thank you to everyone. And if I may, I would like to move approval, have we move approval of items six and seven?
Thank you. Any other discussion on EDRS Agenda Items Six and Seven? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano is absent. Reich is absent. Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins is absent. Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. Next, we have the report of the Housing Policy and Development Committee, presented by the Chair Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward 13 items for consideration today. The first five are land sales. They're on James Avenue, Humboldt Avenue, Oliver Avenue North. The sixth item is authorizing staff to continue with an analysis of the Summit House condominium project for possible housing improvement area financing. Seventh item is also to continue analysis of another project. This is North Side Artspace Lofts, and this is for possible tax increment financing assistance. The eighth item is a carry-forward of year 2018 tax-exempt housing revenue bonds. This is a resolution that authorizes us to carry forward the over $52 million in tax revenue, tax-exempt housing revenue bonds for multifamily housing program. Item number nine is a direction to CPED staff and the city coordinator to work on improvements to the Minneapolis Garden Lease Program. Item 10 is adopting amendments to our unified housing policy. And item 11 is directing staff to move forward with inclusionary zoning policy framework. I'm going to pull both of those items for possible amendments. Item 12 is passage of a resolution establishing guiding principles in support of investments in public housing and the people who live there. Item 13 is approving the appointments to our first configuration of our Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Housing. And those And those are all the items, and I will move 1 through 9, and 12 and 13, and pull 10 and 11 for amendments.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is there any discussion on HPD items 1 through 9, or 12 and 13? Okay. Thank you. Then clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. That returns us back to, Councilmember Gordon, would you like to do items 10 and 11 together?
I prefer to do them separately.
Perfect. So, let's take up HPD item 10, which is adoption of amendments to the City of Minneapolis Unified Housing Policy. Councilmember Gordon, do you want to say anything first?
There's actually two amendments that are coming forward, one from me and one from Councilmember Reich. Councilmember Reich's actually first in the queue, so if you want to go ahead first, that's fine with me.
Councilmember Reich.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Chair Gordon. A slight adjustment in the language, I think it's before you, at the very bottom, where we call out a particular type of project that can allow inclusionary zoning. Actually, we have a great example, real-world example, in Councilmember Gordon's ward near the U of M, where we have basically two structures unified by a common area that have exclusive, because it's a PUD, one tower is for affordability, one's market rate. I think it's a really great model, and obviously, the lenders agreed, and it's being built. So, the provision of affordable units and market-rate units in separate buildings constitutes a reasonable distribution, where such buildings are part of a single-plan unit development, and of course, all other provisions that are already in the policy would apply. So, I would entertain that as a motion to amend.
Councilmember Reich has moved the amendment that's before us. Is there any discussion on Councilmember Reich's amendment? Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be supporting this. I think it's going to be very important to be listening to the market, but also to be focusing just completely on outcomes, not just on how many affordable units that are coming out of our, all the movement that this council does, but also around racial equity, and I applaud Councilmember Reich for working with us.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender, and thank you, Councilmember Reich, for this. I think this does resolve a question that people have had about the way inclusionary zoning is going to work. I also have a little bit of reluctance about this. I'm gonna be supporting it, but it's something that we want to continue to monitor and think about whether this makes sense, because I think I've heard some feedback from people that suggest we don't want to encourage developing affordable units in a way that puts them off in a corner, and really segregates them, and creates completely different living conditions. That doesn't really meet the intent of inclusionary zoning, to really, you know, make mixed-income living really work together. And I understand often the finance pressures and the things that make, this makes sense, and that in many cases, practically and logistically, this ends up being a really good outcome. But I also want to make sure that we're watching what these outcomes look like, and making sure that we're not, over time, allowing the way that this gets implemented to be detrimental to what the goals are that we're trying to move forward with encouraging more mixed-income housing.
Thank you. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. And yes, Councilmember Fletcher, you bring up a very good point, and I'm hoping as we design conditions for these types of units, that those would be considerations for conditions. And as a matter of fact, the project that I was referring to very much is a good model that avoids the very things that you're talking about. And you bring up a very good point, because in other cities where that wasn't addressed, that's exactly what happened, and those outcomes were not positive. So, thanks for raising that issue.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I'm supportive of doing this. I just wanted to weigh in to clarify that this amendment, it will be relating to the broader area of affordable housing requirements, not just inclusionary zoning requirements. So, it will relate to when any project has financial assistance from the city for affordable housing. So, I just want to make sure that's the understanding.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Councilmember Reich's amendment for item 10? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries. The next is a motion by Councilmember Gordon, which is another amendment we have in front of us.
Thank you very much, and this is to amend a section of the policy that just relates to affordable housing requirements relating to the city inclusionary zoning ordinance. And one of the things in the proposal that we got was some exemptions, and one of the exemption was student housing projects. And there were concerns about how do we actually define those, and so I took it upon myself to write a definition. A lot of people talk about student housing, and it's pretty broad when they're talking about it informally, at least in the ward, and developing around the University of Minnesota, and pretty much any project that gets created near there could potentially be defined as student housing. So, I thought, I didn't necessarily want to open such a big window for an exemption. So, I narrowed it down to the following. Student housing is defined as a project located on a college campus, or a project owned and operated by a college to provide housing for enrolled students, or a project within one-half mile of the boundary line of a college campus of at least 10,000 students, where the city's Director of Community Planning and Economic Development determines that greater than 60% of the units in the building are expected to be leased to undergraduate or graduate students because of the design, location, or tenancy restrictions. I have to confess that I lifted much of this language from a definition that Fannie Mae had, and then also worked with staff to refine it a little bit. The half-mile limit was certainly from me. So, I'll move that amendment forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon has moved this amendment for item 10, the housing policies. Are there any other discussion? Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to remind everyone and remember too, that this is an interim ordinance. It's not the permanent ordinance. I'm not sure if I could accept exempting student housing going forward, mainly because that's some of the most expensive housing of all. I mean, just because you can pack six people into an apartment for $3,600 doesn't mean that $3,600 isn't expensive, or $2,800 isn't expensive. I'm sure now I'm gonna get yelled at by some developers. But the long and short of it is, these are very expensive projects, and they get sold often right away for very high prices. And so, I love the intent of this, but I think in the future, we might want to include this in a more, I'm not saying this is not thoughtful, but we need to be thoughtful about how we go forward in this regard.
Councilmember Gordon.
My first preference was to exempt, I mean, take away the exemption in its entirety, although I also recognize dormitories on campus. I mean, there might be, some of it makes some sense, although this is further than I was necessarily comfortable with, but it's somewhere that I believe the city staff, who are gonna have to evaluate these projects to determine if they're student housing or not, and also the authors of the interim ordinance are comfortable with. But I just also want to go on record appreciating the sentiments of Councilmember Goodman, and I think we should look really carefully how this, and also the senior housing exemptions might play out in the more permanent ordinance, and make sure that we narrow those down so that we're not exempting things we, so there aren't unintended consequences.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. Yeah, I think in general, this points to a real challenge that we have in thinking about how to define student housing, because we define everything in terms of income, and we have a constituency that's operating in a debt economy rather than an income economy. And so, the question of how do you do inclusionary zoning for a population where everybody would qualify, and say, well, you know, 15% of the units should be this, or 10% of the units should be this, we have to come up with a different answer, and we actually really do need to do it. So, it's something that I'm very interested in working on, and I think as we think about answers for student housing, they're gonna look different, and they're gonna feel different, because, I mean, the economic demand, the definition of need, the definition of just how housing works, and what people need from it is different. But that is something I'm really interested in working on, and glad to see the interest from some of my other colleagues to try to really find a longer-term and clearer solution on this.
Thank you. I'll just comment briefly too. This is part of the inclusionary zoning ordinance that has been underdeveloped for a number of, development for a number of years, and I think, maybe echoing Councilmember Fletcher's comments, I think what we really need is a standalone effort that really looks at this issue of how do we get better affordability for student housing in a population that has just a different way of calculating income than our normal 60% area median income calculations that apply to affordable housing generally, and the inclusionary zoning ordinance specifically. So, I'm supportive of this change to the unified housing policy, but I think also just more work is needed on the issue of student housing, and how we can support better affordability in both campus developments, as well as those market rate developments that are targeted and marketed to students. With that, is there any other discussion on Councilmember Gordon's amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries. That brings us back to item number 10. As amended by the two motions, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami is absent. Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that item is adopted. That brings us to item 11, the Inclusionary Zoning Policy Framework. Councilmember Gordon?
I will yield to Councilmember Johnson's amendment.
Right.
Or yield to Councilmember Johnson to present his amendment.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and move item 11, which is the Inclusionary Zoning Policy Framework, and Councilmember Johnson has a staff direction, I believe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a staff direction included for councilmembers, and want to mention that I worked with staff on this. They're supportive of this. This will have staff come back with an annual report on the progress of reaching our goals around inclusionary zoning policy, and any recommendations of, you know, what they're seeing, and if we need to make any adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just say, as the author of the ordinance, I'm fine with the staff direction. There were certainly plans to monitor this very complicated ordinance that was crafted in a way that hopefully will continue to allow and support market rate development for the needed housing that our city so desperately needs, but as well as require and encourage affordability within those units. I do want to note that housing markets change over time in a cyclical way, and so I just want to be cautious of any suggestion that we could tie market changes only specifically to the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance. We are anticipating changes in the housing market coming, you know, it's been, we've sort of been waiting for the slowdown to come, and it certainly will likely come in the next couple of years. This ordinance is intended to not just be something that lasts for one year or two years, but rather make sure that as our city grows and changes over decades, that we are not leaving folks behind, and are incorporating one additional tool to get affordable housing in market rate projects. So, supportive of the direction, but I just also want to note that that is in a bigger context of the changing housing market in the short term. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to echo your comments that this inclusionary zoning is a long-term, and just one of our kind of solutions to creating more affordable housing. I also want to echo the cautions too. I mean, you talked about the market, but I mean, it's a very complex area that if the president tweets, that's going to affect the outcomes that we'll see a year from now. So, I think all of that needs to be taken into consideration. While I will be supporting this, and I really like the sentiment, I think I also want to say that it points to some way that we need to be looking at the data and looking at the outcomes for everything we do for affordable housing, but all of that comes at a cost. You know, I've talked to the department about being more accountable about how many units are we actually creating, and how many do we need? And some of that data, we just don't have. And some of that is because we just don't have the resources or the time. So, when we're asking staff to do more, I want to take it in that context, that everything we're asking them to do is coming at this something else we're doing for affordable housing. So, I'll be supporting this, but look forward to working with staff also to have a kind of a more comprehensive picture to make sure we're meeting our affordable housing goals.
Thank you. Is there any other comment on Councilmember Johnson's staff direction? I don't see any. All in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries. That brings us back to the underlying motion to adopt the Inclusionary Zoning Framework. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Council President Bender, and I will be supporting this motion as well. I do want to just, in addition to the cautions that have already been stated, really think about as we move from interim to permanent, excluding the SUBP goals and contracting goals, trading, I'm not sure how trading one set of values for our values around affordable housing really creates the type of equity that we want to see. And so, I really want to be looking into this issue as we move forward in ways that we can accomplish these goals without compromising our values around fair employment, fair wages for particularly communities of color that will be working, hopefully working on these projects.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender, and I mostly want to thank you for your work on this. This is something that I know you've been working on for quite some time, and I think it really is an important component of the overall vision for housing as we think about implementing the comprehensive plan and making sure that we are incorporating affordable components into that. I can certainly point to several projects that have come through in my ward this year that are, that could be held up as poster children for why we need this inclusionary zoning ordinance, and why we need to think about the ability to more assertively have this conversation as people are proposing projects. So, I'm very enthusiastic about it, and appreciate your work on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher. I'm sorry, Councilmember Ellison. That was you.
Thank you, Madam President. I also just wanted to express my excitement for the passage of this Inclusionary Zoning Framework. And I know it's temporary, but I think that the fact that we are putting together a temporary policy, sort of saying that we can't wait on a policy like this, we can't wait another year on a policy like this, is really important. And while, as we're moving forward as a city, Councilmember Goodman mentioned gentrification, you know, certainly, North Minneapolis is an area where people are sort of sniffing and seeing, and kind of hoping for North Minneapolis to turn into a major cash cow. Things are, you know, cheap now, people are looking to sweep in, and I think that this is really going to send a message saying that, you know, we need affordable housing everywhere, even in areas where, and maybe even especially in areas that are working class, and are trying to maintain that working-class ethic and spirit as a neighborhood. And so, I think this is really important, and I just want to thank my colleagues for all the work they did on it.
Councilmember Schrader.
Madam President, it looks like we're gonna be talking about the Inclusionary Zoning Policy now instead of Ed ZMP, so I want to make my comments, and just to thank you for all your work. You know, a year ago, I was a housing advocate, and what we talked about, what would help this city move forward, would be something that when development went up, affordable housing would be included. And you led that effort, and it is, it's such an honor to be sitting next to you. And I feel, you know, very lucky to be able to help push this forward. I'm really excited for the direction our city's going, and I want to thank all the colleagues for just how much effort has gone into just this interim, because we want to start off on the right foot, and we're really excited to see the more comprehensive one as we go forward.
Thank you.
into the community after incarceration. Currently, we don't have any supports around that at the city. So thank you to everyone who supported funding a violence prevention fund so that we are able to continue to grow this work from the Office of Violence Prevention now that we have one. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Any comments from other councilmembers? I put myself in line to speak. I, you know, I think actually our work around violence prevention is the most, one of the most significant things that the former mayor and last council did, to start investing in innovative programs that we learned about from other cities like our group Violence Intervention Program, our Next Step Hospital-Based Violence Intervention Program that really built on work, that's partnerships around domestic violence preservation and youth violence prevention as well. And many councilmembers have been involved in this over the years, but I think Councilmember Cunningham's leadership here in creating the permanence, in creating permanent staff to lead the work around violence prevention from a public health perspective that is also multidisciplinary and works together with our police department, the city attorney's office, the civil rights department, and others across the city is really meaningful. And I think we'll continue to see the benefits of this work. As one small measure, the number of guns that we collect back off the streets through our violence prevention efforts dramatically increased that activity, the getting guns off the street just skyrocketed after we created a safe way for people to turn in their guns. And it's just one example of the many stories we hear from folks who've benefited from violence prevention work, who are able to turn their lives around. And this is a supportive and hopeful way of looking at violence preservation that takes an intergenerational look, that takes a community-based approach, and I think is really, really, truly meaningful and impactful. One of the most important things that I've had the privilege to have a small piece in over the years. And Councilmember Cunningham, again, thank you so much for taking this work to the next level and providing the leadership that it needs to really blossom and grow into the future. Anything else? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Yes.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and that is adopted. Next, we have the remainder of our report from the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee presented by the Chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee brings forward seven items now that we've already passed item number four. The first is confirming appointments to the Civil Rights Commission. The number two is the passage of an ordinance amending Title 10, Chapter 203 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances relating to food code, amending provisions related to staple foods. Number three is the passage of an ordinance creating an Office of Violence Prevention within the Health Department. Number four is the municipal ID. Five is approving appointments to the homegrown food, excuse me, homegrown Minneapolis Food Council. Six is approving appointments to the Community Environmental Advisory Commission. Seven is amending a previous council action to increase the amount of Minnesota Opioid Response Corps members from one to two. And number eight is the donation of travel and lodging expenses for the 2018 National Immigrant Integration Conference. I move approval of these items.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes, if I may.
Okay.
So I just wanted to briefly speak to item three, which is the creation of the Office of Violence Prevention. This is a very exciting move that we're making with the violence prevention. We have, there are multiple cities across the country that already have Office of Violence Prevention, which is home to all of the efforts like our group Violence Intervention, Next Step, the Blueprint of Proof Institute. So I could keep going on. This is really exciting. Actually, Milwaukee built their Office of Violence Prevention based on the city of Minneapolis's violence prevention work. So it's actually really exciting for us to be creating this office. It's really going to be the hub of where all the violence prevention work will live. We have really, really wonderful city staff that have amazing content expertise with the public health approach to public safety. And so it's not a huge move, but it's quite impactful in terms of making sure that violence prevention remains a permanent priority of the city. This essentially kind of, the creation of this office essentially makes the violence prevention work leader-proof, meaning that it doesn't matter who is an elected office that the work will continue to live on. What we've seen historically is that it's been one-time dollars, or, you know, it's the, it's protected because there are certain elected officials who really care about it. And this is taking that out of the hands of elected officials and making it permanent. And so when we think about the public health approach to public safety, typically, traditionally, it's spoken of almost exclusively talking about enforcement and specifically law enforcement. What this Office of Violence Prevention does is it helps us expand the conversation around public safety to include prevention, intervention, and hopefully reentry as well, reentering into the community after incarceration. Currently, we don't have any supports around that at the city. So thank you to everyone who supported funding a violence prevention fund so that we are able to continue to grow this work from the Office of Violence Prevention now that we have one. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Any comments from other councilmembers? I put myself in line to speak. I, you know, I think actually our work around violence prevention is the most, one of the most significant things that the former mayor and last council did, to start investing in innovative programs that we learned about from other cities like our group Violence Intervention Program, our Next Step Hospital-Based Violence Intervention Program that really built on work, that's partnerships around domestic violence preservation and youth violence prevention as well. And many councilmembers have been involved in this over the years, but I think Councilmember Cunningham's leadership here in creating the permanence, in creating permanent staff to lead the work around violence prevention from a public health perspective that is also multidisciplinary and works together with our police department, the city attorney's office, the civil rights department, and others across the city is really meaningful. And I think we'll continue to see the benefits of this work. As one small measure, the number of guns that we collect back off the streets through our violence prevention efforts dramatically increased that activity, the getting guns
It is in everything, single neighborhood throughout our city. He's someone that I put a great deal of trust in and someone who I can back 100%. And so I certainly, I put forward his name with great pride and he's just arrived. Chief, you're exactly the leader that we need right now, and I very much look forward to working with you over the next term.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be brief. I just wanted to say that we are so lucky to have Chief Rondo as our chief. Really, what a wonderful human and leader in law enforcement, not only locally but nationally. We have had lots of conversations around policing. We've talked a lot about public safety, and we could not ask for a better partner as elected officials than Chief Aradondo. There, as somebody who has worked in the mayor's office and has some familiarity around police chief and the relationships, I have to say, we are genuinely so lucky. So, thank you, Chief. And we, I can speak for myself in saying that I have your back and that I support you in making the cultural change, in making the hard decisions. Being out there and making change is hard. And so to know that we've got your back, that I have your back, and that I look very much so forward to working with you as we move forward. I just don't want us ever, ever, ever to take for granted the fact that we have an amazing police chief here. This is rare, and this is really special and a unique opportunity to work with someone who truly is from the community, of the community, has the respect and trust of the community as well as the rank and file. I mean, really, we have a magical unicorn for our police chief. So, thank you, Chief, for everything, and I am incredibly grateful for your leadership and the fact that I know that we can count on you to really work with us in partnership to make policing, for Minneapolis, to show the rest of the country what policing can truly be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. I spoke in public safety, so I'll be brief, but I just wanted to note, there was an editorial in the Star Tribune this week that noted that community collaboration is working. They're seeing a shift, we're all seeing a shift. Things are trending in the right direction, and people are starting to notice, and people are starting to feel that. And I think that's evidence that we have the right person in charge, and we've particularly appreciated the analysis that it is both leadership in policing, but also leadership in community collaboration that's making this work. So, I'm enthusiastic to vote yes to continue digging deep on how to expand that community collaboration, build on what's working, and let's keep improving public safety across the board. Thank you for your leadership, Chief.
Thank you. Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to thank the mayor for appointing Chief Rondo. And though I will not match the fantastical, flowery words of Councilmember Cunningham, I've known Chief Rondo for five years since I've been on the council, and he's been a fantastic city servant, and I appreciate this appointment and fully support him and wish him all the best, and he has my support fully. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I spoke in favor of this appointment in the Executive Committee and on the Public Safety Committee as well, but I just wanted to just offer my congratulations and sincere desire to continue to work together with you, Chief, to create Minneapolis as the safest city in America, and thank you for your leadership. Looking forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I will then just, very, very briefly, also echoing my colleagues, my deep thanks and appreciation for the leadership of Chief Aradondo for our police department. The chief and I got to know each other really well after Jamar Clark was killed at the 4th Precinct, and Chief, you were a deputy chief then, you took my calls at midnight and 2:00 in the morning, and you were there around the clock in a crisis, doing what you do, which is work together with elected officials, folks from all of the community, people with all different perspectives and experience with law enforcement, and doing so with compassion and leadership. And I agree that you're a transformational leader for our city at a time when that is needed, and just seeing the outpouring of support from you for the community is one way to acknowledge the skill that you have and the importance of your leadership right now. And I know we're all deeply grateful for your service, and also the way that you empower the leaders in the department that share this value of collaborative safety and community-based safety. You know, we're lucky in the 5th Precinct as Board 10 to have Inspector Wade leading the way on co-responder program development, and that is just one example of the many innovative programs that we're seeing in the police department in a time that, in the past few years, the department has really transformed. I know that you're continuing that change into the future, so thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll on the PSEM agenda.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. The next report is from Transportation and Public Works. Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forged 17 items today for consideration and approval. Item 1 was sent forward without recommendation regarding the North Loop paving and street reconstruction project, project approval and assessment area abandonment. As updated by Councilmember Fletcher in the Committee of the Whole report, we will be forwarding this for approval as submitted. Item 2 is the 8th Street South, Hennepin Avenue to Chicago Avenue, Street Reconstruction Project. A series of approvals for that to proceed. Item 3 is the rental vehicle insurance policy. Item 4 is the application for the 2018 Minnesota Safe Route to School State Infrastructure Item 5 is the contract with the Bloomington, with the City of Bloomington for reimbursement of water work by the City of Minneapolis. Item 6 is the contract amendment with Bolton &amp; Mink for additional professional services for the Forest Street Reconstruction Project. Item 7 is the contract amendment with Engineering and Construction Innovations for the project at 14th Avenue South. Item 8 is the contract amendment with Park Construction Company for the 18th Avenue Northeast Reconstruction Project. Item 9 is the contract amendment with Schaefer Contracting Incorporated for the 54th Street Reconstruction Project. Item 10 is the contract amendment with Metropolitan Council Environmental Services for Phase 9 of the Interceptor Improvement Project. Item 11 is the Right-of-Entry Agreement with Bay Systems for environmental monitoring. Item 12 is the 33rd Street East, Street Reconstruction Project from Hiawatha Avenue to Minnehaha Avenue. Item 13 is the Industrial Boulevard Multi-Use Trail between I-35W and Broadway Street Northeast. Item 14 is a critical traffic parking area application. The area includes 10th Avenue South from 21st Street East to 22nd Street East and 21st Street East from 10th Avenue South to 11th Avenue South. 15 is limited use permit with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for pedestrian bike sidewalk facility at 8th Street Southeast within the trunk Highway 35W right of way. Item 16 is the Metro Green Line Extension Assignment and Assumption Agreement with the Met Council. Item 17 is the bid for rental of motor grade snow removal, and that's the final item. Madam President, I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the TPW agenda. Is there any discussion? Did he pull, did he pull any items? Sorry, distracted. You moved the full agenda. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Ways and Means Committee presented by the Chair, Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means Committee has 14 items to bring forth to the, for approval today. The first item is a competitive bidding threshold ordinance. Second item is the contracts for legal services. The third item is a legal settlement. The fourth item is also a legal settlement. The fifth item is a contract amendment. The sixth item is a grant from the Downtown Improvement District. The seventh item is a bid for the 2nd Precinct Air Handler Unit Replacement Project. The eighth item is an amendment to Miniflex Plan Document. The ninth item is a contract amendment with Delta Dental of Minnesota. The 10th item is a contract amendment with Northern Lights Minnesota. The 11th item is a grant from the Minnesota Department of Health for innovative state and local public health strategies. The 12th item is a contract amendment with Varant for software application. The 13th item is a legal settlement. And the final item is the Hiawatha Maintenance Facility Campus and Expansion. And I move approval of all items.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the Ways and Means Report. Councilmember Gordon.
I would like to pull number 1 for a staff directive.
Councilmember Conno.
Just say you want to pull 14.
Thank you. Yeah, if we can pull out item, is it 33? Oh, sorry.
14.
14. Thank you. It feels like 33.
All right, so let's, you know, Councilmember Gordon, why don't we take up your staff direction, and then we'll just vote on that item along with the rest of the agenda. So, Councilmember Gordon, on item 1.
Thank you very much. This is something I believe I mentioned at Committee of the Whole, and I know talked about at Ways and Means a little bit too, having to do with this increasing the amount that kind of requires more scrutiny from 100,000 to 175,000, and this is not making any amendments to any of the other ordinances that are getting amended or any of the other policies, but directing staff from Finance and Property Services to report back to the Public Health, Environment, and Civil Rights and Engagement Committee and the Race Equity Subcommittee on a quarterly basis, starting the 3rd quarter of 2019, on the spending categories by department for contracts under $175,000. To the extent individual departments do not show meaningful progress towards diversity of spending, Civil Rights and Finance and Property Services are further directed to develop a policy that would require city departments to submit contracts for review by Civil Rights and Finance and Property Services in a manner similar to the good-faith efforts process within the Small and Underutilized Business Program. And I'll just speak to that briefly. I think this will help accomplish some of the things that I was concerned that we'll be losing, which is some greater scrutiny. There are millions of dollars that are let out in the contracts between $100,000 and $175,000. I think it was over 2 million last year and over 4 million the year before, but I don't have the numbers in front of me. And I'm just concerned that we should be giving more scrutiny to those. I know that we have high hopes for the Target Market Program to be working very successfully, but so far the last two years, 90% of all the Target Market programs have gone to small businesses that are not owned and operated by people of color, and I'd like to fix that. So, I appreciated the opportunity to hear some of the ideas from staff, including our Director of Finance and Property Services, and then getting our leadership to meet together and come up with this plan that I'm supportive, and I think will potentially bring large benefits and address the concerns that I have.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Councilmember Gordon's staff direction? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries. So then we will ask the clerk to please call the roll on Ways and Means, items 1 through 13, including Councilmember Gordon's item 1.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. That returns us to item 14. Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. And so I have a motion to bring forward. I'm going to lean on the clerk here to see if it would be to amend the items under Ways and Means or to substitute, but the staff direction is here in front of you, and it is relating to the Hiawatha Maintenance Facility Campus Expansion. And so I just want to take a little bit of time to introduce this staff direction, to, you know, acknowledge that there's been a lot of conversations with colleagues and staff that have been ramping up over the last couple of months, and certainly over the last couple of days and perhaps 24 hours, to get this staff direction where it needed to be to ensure that the community who has been actively engaged on this specific topic for the last five years remains at the table, and that the city actually doubles down on our efforts to really solidify their work and vision, and that we provide more support to ensure that there is a path forward for the vision that connects Southside Green Zones with the City Coordinators Division of Sustainability and the residents' hopes and dreams to have a project that strengthens the local food system, creates green jobs, and addresses racial disparities. And so what I'll do is I'll just briefly walk you through some of the points here, and then take any questions or have a discussion about this. So, the first item is really focusing on the specifics of how we will arrive at a healthy, holistic vision of developing a jobs recruitment and training center that provides activation opportunities for the community in the form of retail, shared space, business incubation, potential connections to community empowerment efforts such as elections and voter education, citizenship classes, language learning opportunities. And that is going to be taking the shape of establishing the Hiawatha Advisory Committee, which will involve residents from the neighborhood, city staff, and connecting it to the union and labor groups that are looking forward to establishing a training facility at the campus. The item number 2 is having our city staff work with the community to develop a plan to identify public art, landscaping, sound buffer, and fencing treatments to help mitigate any undesired, you know, sounds or activities right there on that residential area, because it's quite close to some of the homes. Item number 3 is having a very specific work plan with Public Works and HR to talk about the resources and the strategies we will need to ensure that the residents within the three-mile radius area are the priorities for hiring and training for future job openings at this site. And I will also say that I am very open to including other parts of the city in that plan, and I know that our Director of Public Works, Ms. Robin Hutchinson, had talked about looking at the areas of the city where we have art cap zones and how we can connect those conversations to ensure that this is an amenity shared by many people in the city, even if the location is in East Phillips. Item number 4 is further refining and moving forward on the community solar garden plan or idea that we began a few years ago, and this is identifying at least 100 square feet available rooftop space to accommodate a solar program that will serve low-income households in the surrounding area. Item number 5 is a nod to some of the work that Councilmember Bender and Councilmember Fletcher have discussed relating to some of the work that our city can do to ensure that we are reducing traffic challenges and improving safety for the multimodal transportation users of our city through a Vision Zero and Complete Streets approach. Item number 6 is affirming the approval of moving forward with Concept A, noting a large modification here where the job recruitment and training facility will be engaging deeply with a conversation around economic development and community program space, and identifying the best place for that to happen within the site, with an evaluation with our city staff to come back to us in the first quarter of 2019 to ensure that we're maximizing community access and activation, as well as leveraging additional municipal functions such as the elections or municipal ID issuance office, in addition to partnerships with labor groups. Item number 7 is a component about doubling down to support our neighbors to ensure that they have everything needed to ask the city for the support required to establish the urban agriculture project. And so this is establishing a pilot project with the community to come back to us no later than quarter 3 of 2019 to the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, and I hope our Chair is okay with that on that front, to make sure that we can hear from the community directly about what are those plans for that vision, what have city staff done to support that and to bring that forward. And certainly, we can bring this report back to the committee before quarter 3, but we just wanted to build in enough time for folks to get together and to put together a very clear, thoughtful plan of how to bring some clear asks to the table that will align with the community's vision and the city's direction in a more constructive manner moving forward. So, I'm feeling really good about number 7 and developing this pilot project where we're committing to see that vision move forward. Item number 8 is authorizing the RFP for construction services to remediate and demolish, as long as we have a city conversation and a feedback from the Hiawatha Advisory Committee about where the best place is for these activities to happen, and whether or not we are able to salvage a portion of the building to protect the character of the former Roof Depot site and continue to activate the greenway and the access to 28th Street. And the last item here is authorizing the increase to contract number C41654 with RSP Architects for the amount of $950,000, bringing the new total to 2.7 million for the additional architectural and engineering design services that it will require. So, I've spent considerable time meeting with community and staff and councilmembers here to arrive at a location where we can all feel good about where this project is moving forward, and I want to thank Councilmembers Philippe Cunningham, Councilmember Ellison, Councilmember Fletcher, and certainly Councilmember Andrew Johnson, I was going to look at your chair and had to look up, who have been so gracious with their time in brainstorming about ways that we can truly make this project something successful for the community. And I want to just publicly appreciate you, because a lot of times, it just felt like a very heavy project for me to carry, and it was really good to be able to lean on you for thinking and strategies and advice moving forward, because as you know, this has been a tumultuous project since the beginning when it was presented to me, and hopefully in the future, you know, we don't, we don't kind of have to plop things onto folks, but we can kind of ask them, ask them to participate in something like this. I understand the circumstances of this project did not allow for that back in 2014, 2015, and this is where we are today, and I want to be a leader in this conversation. I want to be able to shape this for and with my community, and so that's why I decided to bring this forward instead of like, you know, voting for a no project altogether. And that's after talking to many folks to see where the council's will was at on this project and why, and those conversations helped me to see things in different ways. And while we perhaps may not agree on some of those analyses, I certainly gathered more understanding about some of the contours of this conversation. So, I want to acknowledge that all of those discussions were constructive for me and helped me to figure out how to make the best of this situation, knowing that we have had thousands of hours of volunteer time from community groups and residents really interested in ensuring that the areas in our city that are the most diverse and the most low-income and the most polluted have a new horizon, have a new future. And I would say that this is probably one of the prime examples of how we're going to achieve that together. It's not easy to turn the, you know, decades and centuries of environmental racism around, but I believe that we're putting a good foot forward here in this direction. I did joke with my residents that approving this today would likely mean that 80% of my workload would be spent on this project, just to make sure that everything's moving in the right direction, and so I hope Ahmed is ready to take over the rest of my job in the coming years. But, but no, I'm just, I'm just saying that jokingly, because I know our very talented staff who are here today, Robin, Mark Ruff, David Frank, Lisa Cerny, and many of the other staff members who have been driving this project behind the scenes are going to bring forward their full set of expertise and knowledge and resources to ensure that this becomes a successful story for the City of Minneapolis, because I think we're all interested in that, and we're not interested in that because of notoriety, but because I think we all really care deeply about our communities. We care deeply about our neighborhoods, about the people that make up our families, our congregations, and our festivals, and so we want to be able to do that good work with them. So, I want to thank the community of Phillips for stepping up and for always defending their ground, and I know that this is perhaps something that was not ideal for, for the community, because this is not the vision that they wanted, but I want to assure you that I am going to continue to stand up for your voice and your vision, and I think many of my colleagues on this dais can probably attest to that, how that has happened, and sometimes that's not the, doesn't make it the easiest place for me to work here, but I think that we can continue to build on that strength and continue to build on that passion to make sure that we are elevating the values of addressing the racial inequities in our city as we continue to shift the institution to address more deeply those requests and desires, particularly, as some of you know, the Southside Green Zones establishment has been a huge victory over the last couple of years, and it's such a nascent effort within the city enterprise and local government, that I feel like, you know, a lot of times we want to see very effective and powerful results out of initiatives that we take on, and we're going to have to continue that burning patience going to ensure that 10 years, 15 years, 20 years from now, our kids and our kids' kids are going to be living in a much more equitable society that does have goat farms in the city and that is powered by solar panels, and where we might have composting toilets in every home. That's my personal dream. And so I thank you for your time and listening to me, and I would love to take any questions and then move this forward.
Thank you. And to clarify for my colleagues and the public, Councilmember Conno has moved a substitute for item 14, which has all of the, instead of the four items printed on the agenda, has the nine items that she described. Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, I'm very supportive of moving Option A or Master Plan, Concept A, and I support the staff direction. I don't see much issues with the staff direction. I'm very excited that common sense is going to prevail today, and we're going to move forward with the hard work that the city staff have done. And also, I'm very excited about the three-mile radius and the committee, because that includes all of Ward 6, includes Cedar Riverside, includes Ventura Village, includes up to Elliott Park, and I'm very excited that these neighborhoods alongside the Ward 9 neighborhoods, which are very depressed neighborhoods in terms of employment and skills development, will have a great opportunity to diversify the workforce, and that they will have, these members of this community to join our great Public Works Department. So, that for me, you know, is moving forward with this plan has been the work that we've been doing all this time, and while nothing is perfect, I'm very supportive that we're moving forward, and we're going to get Roof Depot out of the way. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Ellison.
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Conno for the substitute motion and the additions in the staff direction. I think that there are, we've all seen you running around the 3rd floor, making sure that this is, that this is going the way that, that you're advocating for your community. You know, I think that you had convinced me a while ago to really, more than convinced me a while ago, to really trust your leadership and follow your lead on, when it came to this project, and so I'm happy to see you landing in a place where you feel like you're able to powerfully advocate for the community, and I'm support, very supportive of the staff direction. So, thank you.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I would probably be much more excited if I saw this as an Option C or Option D. I wasn't really seeing as Option A as being a win-win, but I'm going to appreciate that I believe that people have worked really hard, and they're coming together, and some of the modifications and safeguards and inclusive nature of the other staff directions are going to make it so that within this, we're seeing that there's a commitment to work better and more closely with community members and community benefits that can come from this. I think as an entity that does development in neighborhoods, we should probably lead by example, and we should demonstrate how we, as a city, as an entity that does developments in neighborhoods, want to make sure that any of those projects and developments that we do bring community benefits and can address the concerns of the nearest neighbors around us, and with that sentiment and that faith and belief in our outstanding staff that is compassionate and empathetic people who understand community and care about that,
really make this as beneficial to the community as it can possibly be. I know that's been something that we've really called on you to dig deep on, and is something that we're going to continue to call on you to dig deep on, and thank you for doing that work. And I really just want to recognize Councilmember Kano's leadership on this issue. I think we've gotten to a place where -- I think we had gotten to a place where sometimes when you try to do too many things in one place and make so many compromises to get too many competing visions all working in one place, you can end up making nothing really work well. And what we've ended up doing is figuring out a way to really find the wins in this and advocate for things that are going to be real, concrete benefits to the community. So thank you for your leadership, and I'm happy to support the direction you've provided here.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Councilmember Kano's substitute motion? I don't see any. I will just add, again, also my thanks to Councilmember Kano and really every council member here for working together on this solution. I think this is what it looks like to have a city council where we can trust each other. And I think Councilmember Kano has put together a package here that requires us to support her leadership and make sure that we are following through on these commitments to the community. So I know that we have your back, Councilmember Kano, in making sure that this vision becomes a success, not only on this site, but in the bigger vision that's put forward here in this staff direction, including continuing to pursue the community's interest in urban agriculture and economic development in the community. So with that, I will see just one last time if there's anything else. I don't see any. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that item is adopted. Finally, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee report from the Chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. The Zoning and Planning Committee will be bringing forward six items for approval. First is the passage of an inclusionary zoning regulations ordinance. The second is the approving council appointments to the Minneapolis Arts Commission. The third is the approving of a rezoning at 208 Oliver Avenue South. The fourth is the approving of an environmental assessment worksheet for 3112 Second Street Southeast Development, and approving the revised findings of fact as prepared by the Department of Community Planning and Economic Development. Number five is the approving of an application for 5827 Nicolet Avenue. And the sixth is the approving of the zoning code text amendment for work plan. Before moving these forward, I will defer to Councilmember Fletcher to have some comments on number four.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender, and thank you, Councilmember Schrader. So I've received a lot of comment on this item over the last couple of days especially, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that, and particularly to clarify, a lot of the comments that we received were -- seemed to be under the misunderstanding that we're approving 230-story towers today. And I want to just be very clear for everybody that we are not doing that, that a vote today is not an endorsement of 230-story towers, that in fact, I don't believe that either the developer is going to end up proposing that bulk and scale nor that we would support it here. That being said, we do these EAW documents based on the biggest possible thing that you might put forward, so that we can consider the environmental impacts as that conversation goes on. And so the question before us is just considering the adequacy of that EAW. We did request some more information and did receive it, so the developer has done what the city asked, and so I'm moving that we adopt the staff recommendation to accept the adequacy of the environmental assessment worksheet, and that we adopt the findings of fact prepared by staff.
Thank you. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you. With that, I would like to move items 1 through 6, and also thank Councilmember Fletcher for his attention on this.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the ZMP report? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No one, or aye on the others?
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the board except for number four, which has 12 ayes in one name.
Thank you. Those items carry and have been adopted. That brings us to the introduction and referral calendar. I have too many pages in front of me. So we have two items on our introduction and referral calendar this morning. First, pursuant to notice, Councilmember Palmasano moves to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the code related to a biennial budget process, clarifying details required to be included in the mayor's recommended budget and aligning budgetary timelines with state law. Second, pursuant to notice, Councilmember Gordon moves to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Zoning and Planning Committee the subject matter of an ordinance amending regulations related to intentional communities and cluster developments. Are there any questions on either of those introductions? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those introductions have been given and made, and the subject matters will be referred to the standing committees in the first regular cycle of 2019. That brings us to unfinished business. I believe that we have five matters which are subject to ongoing review by staff and therefore will continue to be postponed to the next regular meeting of the city council. Under the Order of New Business, we have one item that was added to the agenda this morning, the proposed confidentiality agreement tied to possible property acquisition with Sears Holdings Corporation for 10 West Lake Street, and authorization for the Chief Finance Officer to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. This is related to the reopening Nicolet project. Council Director Frank, you could provide us with a little more background and detail on this.
Madam President and councilmembers, you've had a very full day, and I'm very cognizant of being between you and being done with your last meeting of the year, so I will be as brief as possible. I've had a chance to speak with almost all of you. Councilmember Ellison, my apologies, I couldn't find you this morning. We are making some modest amount of progress as we try to make a deal for the last piece of property, which is the lease of the Kmart at Lake and Nicolet, that the city would need to realize our long-held vision of reopening Nicolet at Lake Street. One condition to continue to proceed as the Sears Holdings bankruptcy proceeds is to sign a confidentiality agreement that their process requires. Our city attorneys have reviewed the document. I believe you have it in front of you. And we are asking for your authorization to sign that agreement. So this is not the deal we would be backed to with any potential deal. This is the authorization to sign this agreement so that we can keep going to see if there is a deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any -- so I'll go ahead and -- I'm sorry. So I will go ahead and move this item to authorize staff to execute this agreement, and see if there's any other questions for staff or any discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that is adopted. Finally, we have the Order of Announcements, and I'll see if there are any announcements from councilmembers. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I'm not exactly sure if this is an announcement or not, but this is the last meeting of this first term, and I just wanted to thank everybody for all the work that we put into. I know we've done an enormous amount of work. I also recognize that the council president can't do anything without us. But we also, I think, deserve, or she deserves, we should give her some credit for the work that she put in this year, trying to wrangle us all, trying to follow what was going on, trying to bring us together, and somehow helping, I think in significant ways, get us to the point where we could approve a pretty significant budget, things like municipal ID, comprehensive plan, all these issues and bringing them forward. And I know that the credit goes to all the councilmembers, and I really admire the new folks who showed up and how involved and engaged and active they were in moving things forward and challenging all of us to maybe keep up with some of that. But I also really want to thank the council president for her leadership, and the vice president as well for getting us to this point. It's been quite a year, and I'm grateful.
Thank you, councilmember. Mr. Clerk.
Madam President, with the council's indulgence, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the members of my own team, the legislative support and administrative team in the clerk's office, who are in the chamber today. These individuals, as you know, work behind the scenes and handle all of the myriad of details that go into a smooth operation of city council and its committees, and also handle the day-to-day management of our council and clerk department. The team is under the supervision of Jackie Hansen, who could not be with us because she decided to take a cruise this week, and I decided to let her. But I do want to introduce those who are here, our committee coordinators. If you'll stand, Irene Casper is in the audience, Peggy Mencheck, Kelly Geisler, Ken Daley, our information and our research specialists, Sybil McMullin and Colleen Peltier, and of course, our administrative managers, Sue Iquinto and Anita Robey, and our in-house design and technology gurus, Grant Johnson, Shar Peterson, Aaron Grossman, Jeff Leon. This is a small but very talented team. It adds incredible value to the city council, to the city clerk, and by extension, to the enterprise and the entire city. As city clerk, I get to take credit and recognition for the amazing work that they do, but it is their talent, expertise, and commitment that makes all of the work we do in our office possible. And as I always remind all of you and everyone, nothing works without the clerks. These are the clerks who make it work.
Anything else? I will then be very brief in my thanks, but I can't let the moment go without thanking everyone so much for this busy and exciting first year of our term together. It is an honor to serve as the president of a body full of bold, imaginative leaders, not just here in Minneapolis, but across the country. And your work is inspiring people to think differently, to do better, to engage our whole community, and I just can't wait to see what the city council does under your leadership for the next three years and beyond. Our department heads are incredibly amazing as well, national leaders, each of them in their fields. I'm sure they're frequently recruited away from us. We need to beg them to stay, because truly going above and beyond every single day and providing leadership to staff who are working so hard, many of whom have many other options and places they could be working, but choose to stay here to work together with us in such an exciting time in our city. And we so deeply appreciate how much you have done this year. It's just truly incredible, and to the clerks and to all the departments as well. And finally, our own staff and our offices. You keep us going through the day, and I know we will each appreciate you, but I want to just name the policy aides who work for us and come here every day and add their talents to support the city and all of us. So thank you, thank you. Happy New Year, happy holidays, and thanks again. And with that, we are adjourned. And I'll note -- so, sorry, I should have noted, we do not have a closed session. It was on the printed agenda, but it has been postponed.